Good evening, everyone. I will call the city council portion of this city council, Port Authority joint meeting to order.
And I will call the Port Authority order.
Uh, I'm looking for our city attorney. Do we need to call the roll or are we good to go?
You don't have any on participating remotely, correct?
No, we do not. Okay, we're good to go then. All right. First order of business is the approval of minutes from the June 7th, 2022, concurrent city council and port authority meeting. Council, are there any questions or additions to the minutes? If not, I'd look for a council motion to approve tonight's minutes.
I'll move to approve the, uh, the minutes.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember De La Sando, to approve the minutes for the council. From the council's perspective, no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero.
And I would entertain a similar motion from the Port Authority for the minutes. We have a motion made by Commissioner Peterson. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Carter. Any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried five zero.
Next item on our agenda is item 2.1, discussion in the Small Business Development Center, which has been an exciting discussion we've been having here in City Hall. And I know it's an important, uh, project that brings together both, both of these bodies very, very directly and in a lot of different ways. So interesting to hear the update and hearing more about it. And we've got Barb Wolf and Carla Henderson with us this evening. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Oh. I just didn't, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, city council, commission members. Barb pointed out that, um, we were here six months ago to the day presenting and we have had a lot of activity. But I really want to give a lot of credit to Barb Wolf, Emily Larson from our co-ed team. They have been the drivers. They, I just show up, you know, and, uh, but they have done all the heavy lifting, uh, the last six months. And so just to refresh your memory, uh, we wanted to create a space and community that inspires entrepreneurial spirit. So we are taking former fire station number three and revising it, repurposing it, I should say. And here is where we are. We have one and a half million dollars. Um, if you're familiar with the ARPA money, McKnight, we received a business district initiative from Hennepin County and $50,000. Then they turned around and gave us $400,000 as part of their community investment initiative. And we presented to create a placemaking a couple of months ago and they said, well, we're going to take $300,000 from our fund balance. This is going to be our number one priority for 2023. So, uh, very excited about that. Want to talk about?
Sure. Okay. So when we were here last June, we hadn't convened our advisory committee yet and, and we've done that since and they've had six meetings. And so when we're looking at that, we're looking at the public participa- participation. And when we look at that across our spectrum, um, we're really focusing on what this committee can give to us. Uh, so that we're actually informing them of what we're doing, supplying them with information, uh, consulting with them, involving them, and then having this collaboration so that their recommendations and suggestions, we're taking those and using them to the greatest extent that we can, uh, when we're making our, um, our, um, decisions and moving forward. And so that's been a very important part of this process. And the group that we convened was very strategically chosen. And so when we were before you last, we sort of told you the groups, but here, here's the folks that are on our advisory committee. And when we're looking at focusing on the Small Business Center and we're looking at BIPOC-owned, women-owned, uh, youth and our artist community, uh, we really intentionally chose these folks so that, um, they can contribute to this, but also bring it back to their communities and their networks of folks. Um, and this has been a really great group that has just really become very cohesive. Um, it's, it's been very phenomenal and adding the youth on there too has been very important from that perspective. Um, I, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but it has just been really amazing.
Yeah. Um, the only thing we provide is dinner and, uh, the participation has been, um, just, people are just very committed. Uh, they follow up the day after with all kinds of ideas. Um, a representative from Normandale Community College, after the first meeting, I think he came with like a list of things and then he emailed it and, um, it's just been, it's, it's been really, really nice to see, uh, see this engagement and the commitment that the community has for this project.
And so here's our group. Um, after one of the meetings, just, uh, sort of, uh, to capture everybody in the celebration and you can see with the smiles and always the way we end this, it's always amazing to the group what we came up with by the end of the evening. And anybody that's participated in facilitated conversations knows that. Um, so here's our vision statement. This is a draft statement that was produced by this group. And I just want to state that this is a draft statement and every word behind this is very intentional in what it's trying to create. And so bear with me while I read it. The Small Business Development Center is an innovative hub where the city of Bloomington partners with community, the private sector and philanthropy to balancedly grow the brightest ideas and businesses with local, regional and global impact. This includes being intentional and providing resources equitably to BIPOC businesses, women-owned ventures, artists and youth-led enterprises at every stage of economic inspiration. And so when we have this business resource center, it's really that entrepreneurial spirit where you can come and be welcome and invited. Um, your, your idea might not be the one that knocks it out of the ballpark, but you go back and you do something else. And it's, um, we're welcoming everybody into this, um, space. And so I'm just going to walk through a little bit of the work that the committee has come up with. Um, when we're looking at programming activities and services, what does it look like when you go to this business center when it's open? What are those activities that are occurring there? Um, and how does that address the needs of our small business community? So when you look at this and you, you just look across the top, um, the high overarching themes, um, making sure that we have access to the tools, connections and resources, because we know that the Small Business Resource Center isn't going to be the, um, you know, it's not going to be everything for everybody. Um, so, uh, one thing that's become very apparent is that we have to have those connections and those partnerships in the community, um, so that we can connect people with resources. Um, engagement through expertise, uh, and one-on-one coaching, uh, effective, high-performing team that's actually running the business center, um, and opening inclusive and equitable services for everybody. Uh, business development training is very important that that's provided and that it's a multi-use innovative space. And one of the things that we've been talking about more, even though it's a business resource center, we also want it to be available to the neighborhood and that it's a place where people can engage and have those activities in the evening as well. We talked about space utilization. So when you talk about the programming and you want all those things, how do you fit them into the space? Um, and so we have those overarching themes there. It's also about the community vibe and sort of that cool factor, um, that people want to go to this location and it's not that, um, sort of industrial, um, government place. Um, also to be a Swiss Army multi-space, very important that the space is flexible. Um, back in November, when we were before the same body, um, it was agreed by resolution that this space would operate for 20 years. Uh, we know that there will be trends and things that will change over the years. And so how do we keep repurposing this to the needs that our small business community have? Um, and also being resourceful and supportive amenities and looking at our sustainability and affordable dedicated zones where we could have entrepreneurs there that could, um, actually house our space there for a period of time. Uh, then we looked at business criteria. Who's, who is, um, who are we letting into this space? Um, and what do we look at for that? And so we had four overarching themes here of time, involvement, stage of business and identity. And so it's looking at what are the needs of our small business community and where are those gaps and how will we make the biggest impact with what we put into the space? Um, and then what is our role as city, uh, when we're leading this, uh, Business Development Center? And what are we all about with Bloomington and what are we not? And what are we portraying as we're in this space? And just finding the right balance for all of this. And this is what the group came up with. Um, so there's been a lot of brainstorming and a lot of visioning that will help inform the process as we meet with, um, our, our architectural and design team. Um, this has been a lot more visioning, um, process, but as we move into 2023, it'll be a lot more tactical and getting into a lot deeper on topics. Um, we just hired our architectural engineering design team. Um, the lead is formula, um, architecture and in partner with Alliance. And a big part of this is juxtaposition arts, um, for our engagement and placemaking. Even though we've had engagement ourselves, they're going to lead a lot more of that neighborhood engagement and a lot deeper depth throughout the, um, 2023. So our projected timeline moving forward, juxtaposition, we'll start with them with the, um, more in-depth engagement in 2023. But then we're also going to be having this partner with the architecture team. Uh, we've already started with a couple of meetings, um, really focusing on our programming and what it looks like to have as facilities within there and the quantities of people that will be using that, both inside and outside the building. Uh, we actually meet with them again tomorrow. Um, and then we're going to be moving through this process where, uh, as we move through the design phase, that we will be bringing this forward for bidding for a construction company, um, in the summer of next year and then, um, begin the construction phase, October, November of next year and finishing up with an opening at the end of 2024. So our next steps, as I've stated, we're going to continue to meet with this, um, advisory committee. And I really, I, again, I want to give them credit. They have met six times already and they are very committed to this work and are engaged and enthusiastic about it every time that we meet. Um, and so looking forward to this in January and February when we can get into some deeper dives on it. Um, and doing the engagement with the neighborhood community and stakeholders. Um, and then obviously developing our, um, partnership with the architectural team. We've met out at the fire station twice already. Um, so there's a lot of information that's being pulled together, but they're also very impressed with the fact that we've moved this far, uh, where we are in the process where they don't have to start with ground zero with the engagement. Um, working on our operating budget, that's going to be very important in 2023. And then also we'll be going forward, uh, like Carla stated earlier, we presented to the Creative Placemaking, uh, Commission earlier this year. We're going to be bringing this to the Public Health Board and then also the multicultural advisory, um, committee, uh, other what, other known as MAC and not the airport MAC, um, this is actually housed in the police station. Um, it's a joint partnership with Hennepin County and it's put in place to, um, create better engagement and communication between the police department and our community. And we have a lot of variety, multicultural variety within that committee. Um, just happened, I didn't even know that we had this and I was at a networking event and I met somebody that was on this committee and said, you have to come present, um, because she wants to bring this back to her community. And so just creating those networks and just keep driving this out to our community has been really great. And so with that, we'll stand for questions.
Well, thank you both very much. It, uh, it's, I, it's exciting to see the steps forward that have taken since six months ago tonight when, uh, when we last heard from this. So well done. Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so if people, small businesses in Bloomington go to our website, we have a Business Resource Center webpage. We have all kinds of resources for small businesses in Bloomington. And so I'm curious how you see kind of the two parallel, I mean, like one is kind of a current strategy, current resources, and this is obviously in development. But how do they, do they merge? Do they overlap?
Um, thank you, um, Councilmember Carter. Um, really, there's a lot of strategic partnerships that are going to need to be developed throughout this process. Um, we've already had some that support us in our grant making. Um, but there's going to be many more, including, um, Elevate Business, Open to Business. What do those programs look like and how do we partner? Because as we're starting to develop those, we, we had an event here in October, I think it was, with SCORE and their, uh, retired executives, they do free mentoring to businesses. And we conducted a workshop here in October, uh, through school marketing. And looking at, that's like a sort of pilot of how we can start to partner and start to provide these resources to businesses now. Um, we're going to continue to develop those and it has to partner. And that's where some of the programming will come from as well. Um, and having some of those, um, partnerships onsite. So I think it's just a continuing relationship building, um, as we continue to work with the business community, develop that trust and, and relationships, continue to go out there and tell everybody about it. Um, did that kind of answer? I mean, it was just going to continue.
Yep, yep. Yes, I think so. Um, my second question is, um, I mean, we've heard feedback from the small business community in Bloomington that sometimes when they're operating in Bloomington, that there can be some challenges and barriers with our code. And so are you kind of actively throughout this process and planning to, once it opens, kind of seek that kind of feedback regularly so that we can be receiving that as a council and as city staff and looking through that code language so we can make it easier to do business in Bloomington?
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. And maybe Carla wants to speak to this, but I think we're doing that now. You know, we're learning from businesses when we hear things. Um, and we're bringing that back and we're looking at policies, we're changing things. Um, sometimes I think, you know, I'd like us to be able to move faster or I wish that it wasn't in place that way already. But we are learning these things. Um, going to the Bloomington Community Foundation and presenting to them and learning about an issue that a business owner had at that time, um, and just the process that they went through with the city. So we're continuously trying to improve those processes. Um, it's helpful when you have some of those conversations and you have the community development director there with you, um, because then, um, you know, affecting some of those changes in a faster manner within our department. Um, but continuously looking at that. And then the other thing that we want to do is make sure that we can inform the process for new business owners of what you need to do and the steps that you do at the city and who you speak with and how do we bring them through that process. And I think a perfect example is Europolis, bringing them through that process, treating this as a pilot project and what can we do as a city to support our small business. And I think we're teaching staff that too.
Yeah, it's, it's a, um, I love when, um, Councilwoman De La Sando said, putting the community into the development. Um, and that's really what we're trying to do in changing some of the culture. Um, we just don't want to hand a budding entrepreneur a form and say, fill it out and we'll let, we'll send them the list of everything you need to do. We like, with, uh, Garopolis, Barb and I went over to Public Works and sat in their conference room and showed them the water lines, what, you know, he would need to upgrade and what, you know, like, we wanted to have full disclosure of what that impact was going to be, um, where we can't make, you know, some changes and then getting, uh, encouraging our planning division to be, to, to be a little bit more creative when they look at the code. Um, and then point out where, where some of the areas we need to actually just take through the process and change. And I think you're, you're seeing that happen. And the more we're out there, uh, the more we're learning. I mean, you brought us to the, um, the sisters at Drooling Moose. And I'll tell you, when Barb and I went over there, we spent two hours with them. And when we walked in, you know, it's like the city's here. It's like, they're like this, you know? And they're telling us all the things that they wanted to do and all the reasons why we gave them, why they could not do it. And we left there like, we have our number, call us, you know, they're looking for a warehouse. We were like, we will work through that process with you because we don't want to lose you as a business. We don't want you going to Burnsville. Um, and so I think you'll, you just see, start to see more of that.
Well, I will say that we definitely have seen it and we've seen the change. Um, at least, I mean, I would say that for myself and just really appreciate your leadership and, um, the, I would say you've, you and your team have just gone above and beyond. And it's really noticeable, not just to the council, but to our entire community. And so really thank you for that.
Just to build on what, uh, Councilmember Carter said, and hearing business owners in Bloomington for years.
Commissioner, Commissioner, could you turn your microphone on, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So building on what, um, Councilmember Carter said, having been somebody that's dealt with years of businesses at many levels, including Mr. Constantinophs and, and much larger, but that's always been the point of pain of, of the business and the permitting and the signage and all of that. So I'm really glad to hear that that's stepping up. And if I'm not mistaken, that was highlighted in the, the survey that was engaged, um, last year by business owners. So it's, it's good to hear this momentum and taking some of these businesses and being more forward with them directly is, is, is good to hear. So.
Can I just mention a, a feel-good too? Um, with the Saturday, um, proclamation of Small Business Saturday and then with our window clings and going out to the business community, there's a small, um, shop, not sure if I can, well, we've already mentioned other names, Peewees. Um, and meeting the owner there, um, from Guatemala and, you know, his chicken recipe that he has for his chicken and taking a look at what he has there. And, um, I've, I met him, uh, through the process with the CARES Act funding also, but building that relationship and English isn't his first language, but bringing out our business advisor, Vicky Gonzalez from Open to Business Program and her, her, she speaks, uh, Spanish as well. And just having that communication back and forth, like she's going out this week to look at his marketing and website materials and what we can do to help improve that for his flow of business. And so it's making these connections and building that trust in our community where that can be the, the, um, you know, spread by word of mouth. Um, and, and that is happening in our community and we've seen it. So I just want to share that feel-good too. So thank you for indulging that.
Council, anything else?
Commissioner Peterson?
You know, I, going back to the Small Business Development Center, um, and I, I'm, I'm really excited about that. If, if, if we came and said, hey, we'd like to have that open six months earlier than what you're proposing there, what, what would be involved in making that happen? Is it possible? Is it, what's, what, what would, what would we need to do in order to do that, to speed it up?
I think at this process, like, we've gathered so much information and I, and I know, like, this is something that we, and, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Peterson, I didn't address that properly, but, um, when we look at this process and I think, gosh, we're doing this as an answer to the pandemic, right? And, and looking at those inequities and, and trying to address that as part of this. Um, and it seems like a slow process and we say it's going to open in 2024. Um, but we also want to do it right and we want to make sure that it is the right, the right thing that opens correctly so that when people come there, they do feel inclusive and they're going to keep coming and it is, they're brought into the community. So all the information that we've gathered and when we bring that forward and it's going through the design process and we have to bid it out and then we start the construction, I, I don't know how we could speed it up at this point. And, you know, one of the things that the advisory committee is going to, um, dig deeper into is the branding and the logo. And so when you look at that, what is it named? What is, you know, what are the colors for it? We want to incorporate that into the design as well. And, uh, we just discussed that this morning. When we come up with something, you know, can we provide that to the community? Maybe there's three different designs and have the community vote on it and then we're getting the word out there more. And when I think about all the strategic partnerships that we need to set up and the programming and the activities and the engagement and the placemaking, it's a lot. And so I don't know that it can be sped up at this point, but I, I love your enthusiasm and I would love to be able to do that.
Thank you, Barb. And, um, Commissioner Peterson, the other thing is staffing. Um, as you know, taking the port citywide is going to allow us to bring on, um, additional staff that will help support this. Um, and, because right now, like I said, it's Barb, Emily Larson, and I pop in every now and then. Um, so, but we're going to need staff to be, to be running the project, right? And project manager and, you know, all of that. So, um, I think, I mean, we may be able to move it up maybe a month or two. Uh, but I think we just, because we need to bring, we need to add some capacity to the team.
Other port, according?
Councilmember De La Sando?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, President. Um, hi. Good to see you again. Uh, one of my favorite topics. Um, I'm curious about the, uh, early ideas around programming. Uh, you know, the notion of small businesses, it's a, obviously it's a very broad category. Um, when you, when you add on to that, the, the, you know, at one end, more of the entrepreneurial, um, uh, you know, could start small, could get big, right? Kind of scenario. And then on the other side, you have more of your, like, single person, you know, maybe they're in, um, in the arts or they're in some kind of, you know, performance space and they have, uh, they have a small and maintain a, a sole proprietorship. Uh, so in that spectrum, what, what has been the discussion about, um, where you would put limitations or where you would create some bumpers, uh, so that you don't get drawn into, um, you know, 9,000 different types of small businesses and you can't go more than an inch deep on any of them because there's just too many? I'm just kind of curious what those discussions have been.
Sure. Thank you, Council-
Were you in our meeting this morning?
Yeah, Councilmember De La Sando. Um, we've had multiple meetings over the last, like, two weeks particularly about this because when we meet with the advisory committee, of course, everybody wants something as part of this. And let's just look at the arts piece for a second. And when you look at that, like, um, say you're an artist that you work with clay and you need a kiln or you, um, work with spray paints and you need something with odor control, or you work with some other medium that needs temperature control or something else with sound. We can't be everything to everybody in this small space. And so one of the things that we do know is there is a location in Eagan that would, is close by. So that's one of those things when we're talking about strategic partnerships is we need to go visit that, tour it, create that partnership there. Um, what are the limitations to the membership there? You know, is it something that we can partner that, um, if it is a certain group of people, can we send people their way and then vice versa and have this sort of relationship? Um, so there's, there's a lot of that of, there's just been a lot of discussion about that programming because it has been so wide. it has been so wide. Um, even to, uh, maybe we could have a rooftop, you know, but then that requires an elevator. And, um, of course, it expands our space, but it also expands our budget. So, um, it's been a variety of topics. I think the main thing is, is that we do have to have that flexible space that can be easily moved to create, um, barriers for when you want to do certain things, but then also open it up. Um, and it's very important for us to use the outside as well. And so in those warmer months, um, you know, and even looking, can it be possibly April to, you know, October, um, and using that outdoor space. It's been very conversation.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the, the conversation and, um, it is a challenge. Um, and I think your, your idea of, um, not, not, um, you know, overlapping, if there's an expertise around some of the, you know, creative arts in Eagan and we create a different expertise and then we can share that and become hubs of innovation in particular areas, that, that seems to be a good idea potentially. And so, um, I appreciate that you all are thinking about that. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman?
So originally I was going to ask about the, the business survey that we have. I'm not going to do that. Um, what I wanted to ask is, so this opens up in 2024 and, uh, you know, five years out, I think about our, our mission about making a remarkable community that we talk about. And then I also think about the mission that you've kind of put forward for this particular piece. How will this body or bodies in the public know, um, you know, uh, success? What does that look like from a measured standpoint? What are the, what are the instruments? What do we know when we, you know, we're all excited about this, but, you know, five years out or three years out, what do we know and we're, we're kind of hitting that?
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. Um, we just recently talked about that as part of the operating budget is what do we look at for those measurements of success? So that has been a topic discussion. Um, myself and another Port Authority member, uh, we met with Hennepin County this week, too, and learned about what we can do through the Hennepin County Library online and doing some of the research and statistics because we do know, um, that's something that has come up in the past couple of years. You know, we don't have the statistics to show, we've been saying, well, we do great in this area, great in that area, but what do we have to actually show it? And so we need to start with some of that baseline work and we need to decide how we're going to measure that as we move through this, um, this center. And what does that look like and what are we capturing as the people come through? So that is something that we have yet to establish what that plan is, but it is part of the plan.
And I, I want to add that, um, we, we wrestle with that, uh, question because if we're successful, if we have a entrepreneur, a budding entrepreneur that thinks they should, um, I don't know, uh, go into consulting and then they find out all the things that that would take and the website and the LLC or whatever, and they go, eh, no, that's probably not for me. You know, we've, we've, we've removed barriers for them to kind of explore their dream. And even though it may not be a successful business, we, they've checked that off, that they've fulfilled the dream that this is not going to work for them. So sometimes, I don't want to say the failure or not pursuing a dream is a success because we have saved them money from going out on that venture, uh, or, you know, they want to open a restaurant and they see, oh, we've got all this stuff and what's it going to cost? And I, I can't make the dollars work. Um, but so I'm going to go, you know, become a dog walker or something, you know, like, we've, this is a place to test, to try. And so we talk about, you know, failure is okay. If you don't pursue it, it's okay. Um, so we wrestle with the definition of success, for sure.
Hold on. Mayor, I just want to say, I appreciate that, that, that dialogue and that discussion is, is happening. I think that's important to happen. I know as Councilmember Martin is, is on that, uh, making sure that we tell that story to the community, uh, and making sure that we are, making sure we're telling people about what we're doing. Uh, as we're over there, I have no doubt that we will do that either, but want to emphasize that that's important as we continue to do that work. Thank you.
Nothing else? Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you again in six months. Item 2.2 on our agenda is the contract for staff services between the City of Bloomington and the Port Authority. It's a, an annual thing that we need to do and I think we're making just a couple of slight changes, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, Mr. Jason Schmidt from our Port Authority is here. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President, Commissioners and Councilmembers. So, um, as the mayor alluded, this is an annual contract to allow the Port Authority to hire city staff to administer the services of the Port Authority. Um, so right now, the Port Authority is made up of, uh, four staff members, myself, uh, a vacant Port Authority Administrator currently, uh, position, and then two economic development analysts, Becky and Mike. And then just as previously stated, we are looking to expand the Port Authority next year, uh, to assist with the business resources on the presentation, uh, that was just presented. And then we do have a few others in the city that work on port projects. Laurie, our CFO, Lori Economy Schuler, our CFO, uh, the city manager and a couple other, others that do bill a little bit of their time, uh, for services, uh, that they do for the port. And so the contract before you tonight, it's very similar to last year. There was one policy change. We did add in, uh, the records retention, uh, specifically calling that out within the policy section of this contract. And basically, uh, the port contract is with the city for the staff services and we recommend approval of that contract. And on the screen here are the two suggested, uh, motions, uh, for that action.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think because the city council is going to approve it, we need to take Port Authority action first.
I, if I could ask a question, though, uh, very quickly, I, I see the small change regarding records retention, but given the, the change in, in staffing and the change of responsibilities, does that change the contract at all? That we, the, the change in staffing and responsibilities that we're going to see in the Port Authority, does that change things at all?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmembers and Commissioners, uh, the legal team did review this, uh, both the Port Authority General Counsel as well as the city legal, and everything is covered, is covered on a, on a larger basis, um, and not specifically to each item. And so it's to carry out the port services, um, and the port services is just expanding.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so I would entertain a motion unless there's some questions or things in the Port Authority, uh, like contracts. I entertain a motion for the approval as listed on page eight of your document. Commissioner Luntz made a motion, and it's seconded by Commissioner Hunt. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Council, any questions of Mr. Schmidt regarding the contract? Councilmember DeLisandro?
I only had one, and that was just that it, um, it, the contract doesn't specify the num, or at least the copy I have, doesn't specify the number of people or anything like that. Is, is that, uh, generally in an appendix somewhere else or is there, uh, because we're having changes, like, we don't, you know, maybe, um, what I guess I'm saying is, we're going to introduce new employees, but we don't have their roles kind of defined in the contract. Does that matter? Or, I'm just kind of curious about that.
And, and I think your question was similar to the question that I just asked. And I, and I think the answer is no. I think it's a broad enough contract, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a broad enough contract that it does cover all those things. But I will turn to Ms. Manderscheid. I'm sure she could clarify the situation for us.
Uh, Mayor members, Port Board, uh, Chair members, the contract is written such that the designation of employees is, uh, at the discretion of the city manager. Uh, it's in paragraph one on page nine of the pack of the city manager shall designate unnecessary and appropriate employees. Uh, it's, um, it's, uh, I'll add that, what year was it? Last year or the year before? We did a very detailed review of the staff services agreements for the HRA in the port, um, both side by side as well as individually to determine whether they were up to date with the law and current and representing the needs, um, of the city and the port and HRA. And so we did a pretty detailed, well, we did a detailed, uh, review of them. And then this is, um, dusting it off and, uh, updating it with the records retention for this year. And so it has been, um, relatively recently, uh, reviewed very closely.
Uh, sure, that, that's fine. Thanks.
You're, you're good with that? Okay. Council, any additional questions? If not, I'd look for a motion, uh-
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Lohman?
Uh, move to approve the 2023 contract for staff services between the City of Bloomington and Port Authority of the City of Bloomington.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, seconded by Councilmember DeLisandro to approve the 2023 contract for staff services between the city and the Port Authority in Bloomington. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Simple as that? Very good. Move on to item 2.3. This is a public hearing regarding the amended and restated spending plan for the tax increments from the Mall of America Tax Increment Financing Districts. And that's a lot of words in the title of a, of an, a, an item. So, Mr. Schmidt, why don't you explain that all to us and make sure that we've, we've got it very clear and concise and people understand it both here in the room and, and elsewhere, uh, so they, we get this clear for folks because I know there might have been some misunderstanding.
Correct. Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, President, uh, Councilmembers and Commissioners. So, uh, just a quick, quick overview. Um, so in 2021, uh, new statutory language was enacted into Minnesota law, which allows cities, port authorities, economic development authorities, as well as housing and redevelopment authorities, new flexibility for utilizing tax increment financing through what is called a spending plan. If you recall, we adopted a spending plan back in March of 2009. And what's before us today is an amendment to the spending plan. So what we're looking to do is to utilize it so it's a financial tool and we're looking to increase that flexibility of the TIF funds that the, that the Port Authority might want to utilize on a future project. Today, we are not proposing a project with this amendment. No funds today with this amendment are being committed to a project. Other cities around the state are utilizing the spending plan for this increased flexibility. And if a project were to utilize these funds in the future, um, additional public meetings will be held and future action would be required, uh, by the boards to actually commit the funds to that project. So the purpose of the spending plan, so as I stated, in 2021 state statute requirement, it's required to have the spending plan, uh, to modify the use of TIF to help stimulate local economy in response to the pandemic. It provides the ability to directly fund TIF money strictly into projects that the Port Authority determines is necessary to make the project financially feasible. Key points of the state statute of requirements is all of these spending plans need to be approved by the end of this year, so December 31st, 2022, and upon approval, they then are sent to the Office of the State Auditor. The maximum amount of tax increment received through the end of this year and that, which is in the Port Authority financing account, can be authorized as identified in the spending plan. So it's the money that we have on hand in the account. Tax increment authorized under this spending plan, um, that will be utilizing this flexibility must be spent by the end of the year of 2025. And the spending plan, I just want to state this again, it authorizes, it does not obligate the Port Authority to spend available spending plan increment. That would have to occur at a later date with regards to a development agreement to specifically obligate it to a specific project. So the amendment, so staff is proposing an amendment to the approved spending plan to offer the flexibility to financially assist potential projects if they were to come before the Port Authority Commission in the next two to three years. Specific projects in the spent, in the spending plan expressly includes, but it is not limited, to one of the following: an indoor water park, a sports complex, and/or an event or entertainment facility. Not specifically within our spending plan. Additionally, within our spending plan, we're looking to authorize tax increment up to $95.2 million. That is the increment that is currently or will be in the account, TIF account, at the end of this year. Action on the amendment tonight does not obligate financially assisting any development project. I just want to highlight that once again. This is just to set up the financial tool for the Port Authority to potentially use it in the future if they see a project is feasible. Any obligation to commit that financial assistance to that project would need a separate approval through a development agreement that would need to be approved by the party, Port Authority, and potentially the city council as well, depending on the terms. And so with that, I have two motions before you to approve the amended and restated spending plan, and I'm available for any questions.
Jason, I think one thing you didn't mention, and I think we just need to mention it constantly, is that all of the money that we're talking about here is what I have called fenced money. There are statutory limitations on what we can use it for. And so I, I think when we get into discussions about this, somebody says, well, I'd like to do this, I'd like to do that. Well, the fact is, is that because of the contract that we have with the Mall of America and others in South Loop and that area, these funds have to be used for specific purposes in that area in particular. So it's, it's just something that I think we just have to constantly remind ourselves that this is not something that is just money that can be used for anything that the city would like to do. It has to be used for that, that purpose. And then I think, again, uh, one of the things that I've always tried to do throughout my career is to have the maximum flexibility. And I think that's what we're talking about here. Again, we're not committing anything. It's just something that we're trying to, to look at things potentially that could come along and we can do and, and use this tool that was provided. So. Port, Port Authority, questions?
City Council, Councilmember Lohman?
I've got a couple of questions here. Um, uh, certainly, I appreciate the fact that we've, in the last slide, talked about, you know, that this is the spending plan, you know, just kind of a, uh, I don't like the idea of a spending plan because it makes it sound like it's already spent, right? Uh, but it's something that, you know, it's out there that can be used. If, if we could go back to 2009, uh, was one of my questions, what was on that spending plan list? Does anyone remember what would have been on that at all? It was before my time. I know we use that as a, as a reference. Um, and it's okay if nobody knows, but, uh, because what my point that I want to make is, um, is that were all the items that were on that 2009 spending plan, uh, you know, did, did we do it? Did we do all those things on that list? That's my first question. I've got a couple of other questions here, too.
Uh, Councilmember-
Turn it on.
Councilmember Lohman, um, the, the legislation was very similar. Uh, the, the, I think it was 2010 when it was created. And at that time, um, there was a recession and we were using it for the same reason we're using it now. Um, for example, we did a co-op, a grocery store, um, anything that created jobs was in the realm of possibility. And it's the same thing here. The language is slightly different in the, the 2021, uh, law, but it, in essence, is the same law with a few changes to, um, really OSA changes, um, regarding the requirements and when things have to be spent. Those are a little bit different, but the, what you can use the money for is very similar.
Okay. Yeah. And I appreciate the background, but what I was curious about was what was on that list at that point in time that we put forward and maybe what, what did we do? What we did do? If we don't have record of that, no, no big deal. We can move on to my next questions. I don't-
Well, I would mention that I, I've been working with the city since 2004 and I don't believe that you did a spending plan, um, in the earlier legislation.
Interesting. Okay.
I don't, I don't recall that.
Okay. I think that's fair. We can, we can move along then. Uh, my next question is, I, I think that as the public looks at this, one question you may ask is, okay, well, we started at 55 million, now we're at 95 million. Why? And why not higher? Why not lower? Help, help me understand that. Is it because of those items that we added or?
Mr. President, uh, Mayor, Councilmembers and Commissioner, or Councilmember Lohman, sorry. Um, uh, so why 95.2 million? So one of the items, uh, that I kind of went through in the, in the presentation here is the maximum amount that you can designate in a spending plan is the amount of tax increment that has been collected and is in the account at the end, end of this year. And so we are looking to take, use the full flexibility of this code, um, of this statute, um, temporary, uh, statute requirement of flexibility and to put the entire amount into the plan. temporary statute requirement of flexibility, and to put the entire amount into the plan. Previously, when we adopted the spending plan back in March, we were specifically just looking at the water park project, not thinking beyond any future additional projects. And so, staff started to kind of brainstorm this idea and thought, if we really want to utilize this at its maximum, this temporary tool, we would need to do the amendment by the end of this year. We get that approved, and if any project comes forward within the next two to three years, we have the option to use this tool.
That makes total sense to me. So, total flexibility within that 95 million, it's what we've got there. That's the ceiling. That doesn't commit us, as we've said three or four times in there, to doing any of these items within those three or four areas that we've identified. So, then just finally, I know it was in the packet, and I just want to be clear, because I know we didn't have it listed specifically, but if we decided that we were going to do something with affordable housing, it's possible. We don't have to specify that because we can already do that with, with TIF monies. Is that correct? Is my understanding of that correct?
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, that is correct. Affordable housing is a TIF-eligible expense to date.
Well, thank you. It seems pretty clear to me that this just leaves us with the most opportunities, Mayor, to be able to have the flexibility to do what's best for our taxpayers. Thank you.
And just to, to support what Ms. Eddington said, we got a note from Lori Economy Show, their COO who said, or CFO, who said that there, in fact, was not a spending plan the first time through. So, that confirms it.
Commissioner Luns?
Aye, Jason, thank you. I just want to be clear on a couple of things. One, the 95.2 million, that's the entirety of the TIF fund account for the City of Bloomington.
President Erickson, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Luns, that is the, that will be the amount of money that we have in that TIF account at the end of this year.
Okay, so it's a bit of a projection.
Correct.
Okay, great. And of that, 35 million has been committed to the T5 water park as of last March, last March's meeting. So, that's about 37% is already dedicated to that if and when it happens, approximately. I ran the numbers earlier. Okay. So, that will leave 60 million in the account to develop these other projects that may or may not come along, none of which have a business plan or development plan or anything like that in front of the Port Authority staff whatsoever. Is that correct? This is just, because I'm kind of wondering where, where did this, where did the events center and the entertainment center and the sports complex ideas, where'd they come from? I mean, we, first we've really heard of them, so I've just got to question, where did that, and how broad do you want to go? I mean, I'm guessing you could add housing projects and other things to it if you wanted, but there'd be 60 million left then after the 35 million that goes into the equity, the city's equity into the water park. Am I, is my numbers right? I mean, I...
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Luns, I'll let Julie Eddington go over a couple of the items with regards to that approval, and then I can get, I can expand a little bit more on your second part of your question.
Okay.
Commissioner Luns, I just wanted to mention that the plan that we're looking at today has amended and restated the previous plan. So, the previous plan we did is no longer...
Spending plan.
Correct. The previous spending plan has been amended and restated. So, the one that you're looking at today is the only one that we're looking at.
That's the one in the agenda packet?
Correct.
Okay. And by voting for this amendment, we're voting for the language as written, which we were given into the agenda packet, exactly what it says. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hunt?
Building on that question, I want to be clear, the 95...
Commissioner, if you could turn your microphone on, please.
I want to be clear, the 95.2 is not the entirety, it's that fenced money, right? Okay, because I think your question was, was that the entire city to...
Entirety of TIF. My question, I thought, I understood this from Jason when I talked to him a while ago, that 95 was the entirety of the TIF fund account in the City of Bloomington for development in the South Loop.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to clarify, to make sure it's the one that's just for this...
Right, and that's an estimate, what it'll be at the end of the year.
Not for the entire city, but the fenced money. Yeah, okay.
TIF fund in the South Loop.
Commissioner Hunt and Commissioner Luns, the, the money that is in the spending plan is, right, the fenced money, and it's unobligated tax increment. The legislation is very clear that you can only put in unobligated TIF into that spending plan.
Okay.
And so, we still have the other amounts that the Port Authority
Okay.
has for their own uses.
Okay. Thank you. Another question beyond that, for the language as written, we're looking at three things, but I heard the comment about housing. Are we only limited in this spending plan a water park, a sports complex, or an event and entertainment facility? Are those the three items we're looking at specifically to be in the spending plan? Or is it some point broader, some things reinserted into here, like housing?
Commissioner Luns and Commissioner Hunt, there is a paragraph that talks about other projects that could be developed, that are not named in the spending plan currently. But again, anything that you do would need to come back to this group for approval. We'd need to get a contract. So, really, right now, the group is being asked to put the money into the spending plan. If nothing works out, it will go back to the tax increment district. And anything that you do will have to be approved by a, with another meeting and another contract.
And if I could just add, if I could add, please, Commissioner Hunt, on page 24 of the packet, I think.
Right.
It says pretty clearly, "The assistance authorized under the spending plan expressly includes, but is not limited to..."
Yeah.
"...assistance to finance."
But not limited to.
So, it includes these things listed, but it's not limited to those in any way.
But you're saying they're unobligated, but the city has voted to obligate 35 million of that 60 million to the water park. So, they are obligated, aren't they? Am I, what am I not getting here?
The original spending plan that we had did, in fact, obligate that 35 million. When we did a new spending plan, we called it an amended and restated spending plan. It, the first one no longer exists because we've amended and restated it. So, although that 35,000, 35 million is no longer in that spending plan specifically, it's within the 95, 95.2 million.
Right.
But it is not specifically obligated.
And there's a balance of 60 million.
Well, the new spending plan, the amended and restated one, does not have dollars associated to anything in particular. So, the 35 million is gone, and the new spending plan just has the 95.2 million, and it is not necessarily obligated to any particular use.
So, if Mall of America T5, since we don't have an agreement with them anymore, the way it sounds, they come back, there's this lump sum of 95, they come back and say, "Well, 35 won't do it. We need 45 or 55," then we, there'd be a new spending plan drawn up to accommodate that, right? And we got a memo back in July from Jay, Shane, saying that the cost overruns on the latest, on the water park, the latest cost overruns on the water park were 10 to 30 million dollars. Those were the overruns, cost overruns or cost budget yet may. So, the risk here being that that 35 million is now 45 or 65 million out of a total of 95 million.
So, Commissioner Luns, we do have a contract with the mall currently. It may need to be amended based on what happens next with the spending plan, but we do, in fact, have a contract currently.
So, it is obligated?
I think, once there's a project, potentially, there, there may be amendments to that contract.
Councilmember De La Sando?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, I get where Commissioner Luns is going here, and I just, I think we should just be honest about what we're talking about here, right, which is that what we're saying basically is that, that the way that we currently created the obligations within the TIF plan today are being amended, and we're basically saying we want flexibility to use that money for any project within the, within the spending or within the TIF district. We want to use, we want to be able to use all of it. We don't want to just be able to use some of it. We want to be able to use potentially all of it. I'm not quite sure why we have a, a list of projects in that list, if we did a spending plan before that didn't include any particular projects. So, I'm kind of confused why we, because I'll be candid with you, that set off a lot of discussions within the community about, like, what's this sports complex? Who knows anything about a sports complex? And, you know, then it got written up by journalists, et cetera. And so, I, I'm wondering if there's a reason we're calling them, those kinds of things out specifically when it's not really necessary, number one, and, and number two, caused a lot of confusion. So, I, I don't know if, if that's the case, but, but my opinion is that what I feel like we're being asked to do is say, can you make that full 95 million available in case the water park needs more money? And I do think that that's what we're being asked to do. And I'm not saying that it's going to happen or that we're going to do that or anything, but that's what it feels like is on the table, in my opinion, so.
Well, that's why, where the events center and, and the sports complex, where that came from, because that's, that's new.
Right, right, and that's why I just don't under, maybe someone can answer the question as to why, why we specified anything when we didn't need to, number one, it sounds like, and we hadn't done that before. Thank you.
You know, I'm looking at this as being something very simple. All, all we're trying to do is to take and have the maximum flexibility under statutory change. And I think we get into these things, and as I understand our legal counsel telling us, I mean, we have taken and talked about certain things, but, but there's nothing that is actually actively going forward. And so, whatever happens, it's going to have to come in, and it's going to have to be presented with whatever numbers and things they do, and whether it's the water park, or whether it's water park plus this or plus that or whatever, is something that is, is out there that is going to be coming forward. So, to me, the action that we're being asked to take here is to simply take in, take the maximum amount that we can put under the new, more flexible definition, give us the flexibility, and then all these other questions are things that are going to have to come back to us in another time.
I would agree, Mr. President. I think that's, it's, the definites are the, the amount, and then the fact that we have to do it by the end of the year to designate that, and that we're trying to have the most flexibility possible. The, there is no specifics as to what that means in terms of where that flexibility is going to be applied. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And, I mean, I, at the risk of, of attempting to speak for Councilmember De La Sando, I, I get that. I, I don't think that's where the confusion lies. And I'm, to be honest, I'm glad she spoke up because it's not clear to, I mean, I understand the concept of the flexibility, and I, you know, I understand all of that, and I understand as well that any actual spending, like concrete spending obligations would need to be approved by the Council and our Port Authority. I guess the question, and I don't know if this is a Ms. Eddington question or not, is, you know, if, if the goal is flexibility, why include specific name projects in the spending plan at all? And I, I mean, I, I think that it's, I think it's less of a sort of, and I don't, you know, maybe it's a legal, this is, I'm not sure why, to be honest. Who's the right person to answer the question? So, I'm not sure if it's a legal question or a policy question or what, but, I mean, that, that is, you know, I have not heard from folks, but that's certainly the alarm that went off in my head, too, is why, you know, why include these specific items if there's no need to do that? So, I don't, I don't know who could answer that, but it'd be, I think it would be helpful, if for nothing else, to, to ease our consciences.
So, who wants to take this?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, Commissioners and Councilmembers, I think Ms. Eddington and I can both take this. So, one of the requirements of, of the spending plan, the way that we have kind of interpreted it, is that we do need to list kind of projects with which the, the funding will be applied to, that it just can't be a broad array of any use. So, we got to kind of tie it to some projects. The previous spending plan that was approved in March 9th did have a specific use. It was just the water park. And we did have kind of that catch-all phrase in 2F, I believe, 2, excuse me, 2D, which did describe any other project that does create jobs. And so, reviewing it this second time, we looked at the Port Authority's, their work plan, and one of the items on there was to, to analyze the feasibility of a multi-use center in a facility. And so, with that, and this is approved zoning use within this area, we decided to add these uses to that list as well, in case if it were to come forward within the next two years. We're not sure if it's going to, but that was on the work plan. So, at that time, with staff's discretion, we moved forward to, to put that additional item in the spending plan. And so, Ms. Eddington can, can expand on this as well with regards to legality issues.
Yeah, I think you've done a great job explaining that. You're right, it's important to put things in the spending plan that might happen, but we have a fail-safe, another, the paragraph at the bottom that says, "or anything else that we can create jobs for." And that's, that's really the key to all of this. And, and we've done a lot of these, our firm has, and they're very similar. Most of the people that are doing these plans have written ideas of what they're looking for, real, real projects, and then they also have a catch-all saying, "or anything else that will create jobs because we need them." So, I don't have anything further to add.
Commissioner Hunt, did you have a question?
I forget that. What's the downside of not doing anything? We just don't have that funding available then? Or if we don't have it in a spending plan that, done by this year?
So, Commissioner Hunt, the spending plan has to be completed, signed by the city, and provided to the OSA before the end of the year. And so, putting something together is a great idea and really important if you want to preserve this, this potential opportunity. It doesn't mean that in two or three years, if you don't have a project, something bad will happen, because that TIF can be, at any time, can be removed, it will be moved into a separate account pursuant to the legislation. If in a couple of years you don't have a project, you just put it back into the TIF account that it was in originally. It's still going to earn interest, and all of that will go back into the regular TIF accounts.
So, if I could, Ms. Eddington, let me ask it this way. So, was this a, was this a decision, something we wanted to do, the Port Authority, the city, that we wanted to do to include that list, those three things? Or is that statutorily required? Is that language in the statute that says you got to include at least the different types of projects that you might be funding, might be, not will be, but might be funding through this, this, this TIF fund?
It is not specifically required by the legislation, although the OSA would like to see what you're thinking about doing.
Why are we doing that?
Did you have a question, Commissioner Luns?
It's not required by the legislation?
It is not specifically required by the legislation, but the OSA would like to know what projects you're thinking about doing.
And again, we're putting all of it in there instead of a portion of it to cover what we have on the horizon, the water park, with a development plan, a business plan, all that, versus these other projects, which are nowhere near having that in place.
The funds that we are putting, that, that we are contemplating putting into the spending plan are, are only the... plan are, are only the portion related to what, you know, it's, it's the money that would go to the, to the mall otherwise. It's not money that the city or the port could use. The port money, the, the bundle of sticks that the port has for their, their TIF use is not in this at all. The, the, the funds that are TIF, that are specifically reserved for the port authority to use in any way they want, is not included in the spending plan right now.
What is that sum of money?
I don't, I don't have that information right now.
I want to be able to judge it against the 95 million that would be allocated here. I understand this is an administrative issue at this point, but I'm really struggling with clarity here, as you can tell.
Commissioner Peterson?
I think this, this was a good conversation. It's sounding like there's basically two things here. One is, under this special legislation, we can take effectively a bookkeeping measure to put this money in a particular account and have it available if we decide to do a project of the nature that's talked about here, but it doesn't create any particular obligation for that. And it's only money that is in this kind of special TIF district. It's not all TIF, like was said previously, so that's not true that it was all TIF. It's just this particular, this particular set of TIF money that's, that's used for mall-related purposes. And so I think, to be honest, I, I'm feeling like this conversation is making a very complicated thing out of a very simple thing. It's a very simple thing here. Do we, do we want the flexibility to use this money in a couple of different ways? If a project comes along that we like, and at some future meeting we consider, are we going to say no? And we're saying, we're, we're going to cut off that opportunity? And I'm, just like the president of the port authority, I tend to be, when we're talking about this sort of thing, where we're setting up for flexibility, I tend to be a flexibility person, because we're not, we're not making any particular decision about how it can be spent. And we heard from our legal counsel that if a couple of years go down the road, and we decide that this isn't working out, the money can just move back to where it is today with, with really no change at all. And so I, I think we're making the situation here much more complicated than it, than it really ends up being. I think it's, it's a, this is a very simple thing in my book.
Well, and I think the sole reason for doing this is because the specific legislation made the uses more flexible, and you can do things with it that you can't. And so I think that's why the number has been increased, and so that we just, again, we increase our flexibility. So all we're really trying to do is say, "All of the funds that we have available are something that will come under the new, more flexible definition." And if we don't use it for that, and it has, has to go through the regular processes, then it will revert back, as, as our attorney has said, and just come back and, and be the normal kind of thing. But when it would come back in that situation, then it would have more restrictions on what it could be used for. But again, we have to always go back, this is all fenced money. This was all money that is in this account that can only be used for specific statutory purposes. Commissioner Luns?
I still would like to know, or be informed, how the number 95 was determined. I mean, I don't, 95 million? You say there's more than that. I asked the question, "What is the total amount of TIF available to the port authority?" So I can do some proportionality here. And I, I don't know that I've gotten that answered yet. And I understand that all, but we're still allocating money, trying to make things easier for the water park, which is a known thing, it's been approved, it's up in front. These other things are more nebulous, obviously, at this point. So 35 for the water park, there's 60 million more for a sports complex and an entertainment center? And how are those numbers determined with no proposals, no development plan, no business plan? I mean, where, where'd the magic come here?
Commissioner, the, the way I was understanding it, that 95 million is what would be in the port authority's TIF account at the end of the year, by December 31st, 2022. Is that correct? Is that?
Steve said it was more than enough.
Well...
Not at all.
Yeah, in this, yes.
Not at all.
No, yes, yes. So this is, based on, based on the legislation, it has to, it has to be the total at the end of this calendar year, and that's where that number is coming from.
I mean, we, we obviously have accounts for the McGuff projects, for all of those, and then, then there's an account with the 10% administrative fee account, which is a relatively small account in, in that sense. But I, I think that's essentially the universe of the accounts that we have. I mean, I'm, I don't know exactly what the total number is, but I, I think we're, we're trying to make this more complicated. First of all, I think what, what Julie Eddington told us is that 35 million was, but, but this spending plan says that 35 million is no longer committed. That's no longer there, is I'm understanding what you're saying. And so we're in a situation where we completely have the whole 95 million dollars. And the reason for the 95 million dollars is that we simply want to have the maximum flexibility to utilize the new statutory language that has been put in place and will allow us for a limited period of time because of the recovery from COVID, et cetera, et cetera. So all we're trying to do is simply take and avail ourselves and create the most flexibility that we can.
I know we have questions on this side of the table. Councilmember Coulter, and then Councilmember Lowman. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I, believe it or not, my, my goal was to decrease the amount of confusion on this subject. But what I, I just sort of wanted to close the loop on the, the question that I asked, and I, I think what I'm hearing is that there's no requirement in the legislation to sort of spell out in any specificity the kinds of projects that would need to be used, but the OSA, which I assume refers to the state auditors, the office of the state auditor, it says it's, it's more or less sort of best, if not standard, practice to do so, but that we have this, to, to borrow the phrase, a sort of a catch-all that doesn't limit us to those. And I, I think that really was just the clarification that, that at least that I was looking for, that it's not a requirement, this is just kind of standard practice, best practice, and a preference from the, the office of the state auditor, which I assume we would all rather not run afoul of the state auditor's office. So that, to my mind, that sort of more or less answers my question. So just wanted to close the loop on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that clarification. Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you. Maybe I have more of a comment. I, I wanted to just say how much I appreciated Commissioner Peterson's comments. This is, you know, we're trying to make something more complicated, and it really is pretty simple. So we, we do want flexibility. I, I think that Councilmember DeLisandro also made up a good point. Yeah, let's, let's be honest with folks. Hey, we had overruns with, with the water park. We're gonna, you know, we might see some increases there, and we, we want that flexibility, maybe for that purpose, to do that. And then if, I think staff has made the recommendation and put forward that these are some things that are already in plans, and some ideas that are out there, they may not come to fruition at all, so let's, let's, let's put it in there. Let's, let's see what happens with that. If that doesn't happen, you know, we're, we're ultimately, those ideas, you know, as the port chair has said, have to come back here. So I think Commissioner Peterson is, you know, this is straightforward, it's simple, we should move forward if you want flexibility. And I, I definitely want flexibility, because maybe it comes back and I say, "No, I don't want to do that." So, you know, with that, Mayor, you know, I'm more than happy to, to move this forward if there isn't any other conversation, but I can support this. I think the staff has done a good job.
Well, Councilmember, there will be other conversation, because this is a public hearing officially. So we will get there. We are going to get there eventually, but I'll, I'll keep your, I'll keep you in mind. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just one follow-up question, Mr. Mayor. I guess, the, you know, trying to be just like, you know, Joe on the street about this whole thing. So there's an open question in my mind about why we just didn't maximize this thing out in the first place. Something has triggered us wanting to do this, and nobody is willing to say what it is, and I'm just looking to, for somebody to say what it is. Because, and if we can say that, that's great. I don't have any problem with it, and I'm supportive, but I think we should be honest and say, "Well, we thought it was going to be X, and now it's Y." Well, why is it Y? Do we, do we have more money in the account than we thought we would because of our, our revenues are higher? Is that the reason? Is it because somebody has another idea, and they want to make sure we have more money for it? Like, just let's be honest, is all I'm trying to get to. And so we, we originally said 35, or it says in here, "Up to 55 million." Now we're saying we want it to go to 95 million. What is the reason for the change? If somebody can answer that question, I'd be thoroughly happy.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, councilmembers and commissioners, Councilmember DeLisandro, it was really a missed oversight by, by staff when we did create that first spending plan. We were focused strictly on the water park during that March 9th meeting, looking at utilizing the spending plan just for that. As time started to tick away and getting closer to this end due date of the end of the year of these spending plans needing to be approved and sent off to the, to the OSA, it was at that time, staff started to say, "If we really want to use flexibility, and if the water park project, you know, does come back for an additional ask, or if the water park project, you know, moves forward under the existing timeline, and there's additional TIF for another project, or if the water park project doesn't move forward, there's all this TIF, how can we use it to the greatest flexibility, as, you know, President Erickson has stated?" And that's what, why staff is coming back with this item, is to try to get it to the maximum amount so that if any projects do move, move forward in the next coming years, we have ultimately the maximum flexibility that this statute is authorizing us to have.
Okay, well, I appreciate the honesty. Thank you for that. My, my comments to the port authority commission is that you could also have asked for that flexibility at the original meeting, and we didn't do that. And so, you know, if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do these kinds of things in the future, we might want to make sure that we are, if that is truly what we're looking for, that we, we provide that feedback to staff so that they can then present the right tools from the outset, as opposed to going through this amendment process. So thank you for the question, or for the opportunity to ask, ask the question. Thank you.
And to clarify, Councilmember, that was, it was a concurrent meeting that, where that, that initial decision was made also. So it was the port authority and it was the city council that didn't?
That, that's fine. I'm, seen as it was my, literally my second week on the job or something, I'm not going to take responsibility, but all can, that's totally fine with me. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right.
Well, as I mentioned, this, this item is officially a public hearing, and I think we've, we've heard plenty of discussion now, and I'd like to open the public hearing. And it's odd, because people usually are in front of me when I call a public hearing, so I can see them coming forward, but right now they're behind me, so I will open this public hearing on item 2.3, which is an amended and restated spending plan for the tax increments from the MOA tax increment financing districts. Is anybody in the council chambers wishing to speak on this? No one has tapped me on the shoulder here, or has come up behind me. Thank you, thank you. And, do we have anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
We have no one coming forward. I'll, I'll make a last call here in the chambers. No one coming forward. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, or look for a mo, I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing on behalf of the, on behalf of the city council, and I'm assuming we're going to have to do the same on behalf of the port authority, or is this a city council public hearing? Okay, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing on behalf of the city council.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Lowman, to close the public hearing on item 2.3. No further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0. So with the public hearing closed, are there any additional comments, questions, or statements? Councilmember Lowman?
I don't have any statements. I'm ready to move this.
Let's make sure we've got, everybody has had an opportunity to speak here. I'm looking to the right side of the table here now as well. Councilmember Lowman, on behalf of the city council, would you like to make that motion?
I'd be happy to. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving an amendment and restated spending plan for certain tax increment financing district located within industrial development district number one, South Loop, and authorizing and executing of documents in connection there within.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Coulter, to adopt the resolution approving the amended and restated spending plan. No further city council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0.
And then I would entertain a similar motion for the port authority. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move that we adopt the resolution approving an amended and restated spending plan for certain tax increment financing districts located within industrial development district number one, South Loop.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one.
Five, one. Very good. Thank you. Thanks for the discussion, and thanks for, thanks to staff for the clarification on, on some of the information that was not quite clear as it was presented and as it came through with the, in the packet. So, and thanks, thanks for the questions and the, and the conversation here. City council, I believe that completes our agenda for this evening. I would look for a motion to adjourn the city council portion. Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0.
And I will adjourn the port authority.
Very good.
And wish everybody a very happy holiday, and next time we get together, well, at least with this group, it'll probably be in the new year.